No countdown feature this time, please?
You have my face instead.
Doesn't it have like the initial start as the first part of the video? So it's gonna be you?
It will be my face.
That's perfect. All right, so welcome to the regular session of the Maryland Council of the Town of Berlin. It is Monday, April 8th, 2024. Please join us in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, free, civil, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I was giving it a second to everyone who wanted to play. Nice joke on me for April Fools. I usually read from the top to make sure my date's correct, and I saw it said March 25th. Go back on the previous line. So up first is the approval of our consent agenda motion approved. So I have a motion by Councilmember Horace, a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the vote to approve our consent agenda passed unanimously. Up the, let's see, item 1A3I is the reading of the closed session summary. So I'm gonna read that publicly. Statement of the time, place, and purpose of the closed session. Time of the closed session, March 25th, 2024, approximately 9:35 PM, following the regular session. Place and location of the closed session. The vote to close was done live on Facebook as well as in the council chambers. Following that vote, we did move to the conference room for the discussion. Purpose of the closed session was to discuss legal considerations regarding imposing of certain fees. The date and time that we will return to public meetings today is dated at 7:00 PM. The record for the vote was, the motion was made by Vice President Burrell, second by Councilmember Nichols, Councilmember Green, Ner and Horace voted in favor. Statutory authority to close the session, the meeting was closed under the following provisions of the general provisions, Article 3-305B, item number seven, to consult with legal counsel and obtain legal advice on a legal matter. The topics that were actually discussed, the topic was legal considerations regarding imposing of certain fees. And then you can see who's present. So that's been read. Up next is Agenda Item 2, which is the first reading of ordinance 2024-02, the FY25 real estate tax rate. It has myself, Mayor Zach Tindall running point. The important thing is that we're having a public hearing at our next meeting, which is April 22nd, 2024, in this room. Do I need to read the full ordinance?
You can because it's short.
Thought we liked each other. Ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance of the Maryland Council of the Town of Berlin, Maryland, a Maryland municipal corporation setting the real property tax rate for fiscal year 2025, whereas the charter, town charter, section C3-10 requires the Maryland Council to pass an ordinance setting the real property tax rate necessary to sustain the town's budget. And whereas the Maryland Council have determined what the real property tax rate shall be, now therefore be resolved by the Maryland Council of the Town of Berlin, Maryland, that the tax rate for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 shall be .8375 cents per $100 of assessed value of real property located within town limits of the Town of Berlin. And then, once adopted, following the public hearing, that's when the rest of that will be pulled in. To note that the tax rate that is introduced is the current tax rate. So with that, please understand that that covers the items that we've discussed in our general fund budget excluding the additional request from the Berlin Fire Company. So with that?
This isn't the current rate. He said it was the current rate.
Well, this is, this is the draft that was done in accordance with the advertising that we had to run ahead of this. All of this comes down to timing.
I know we got in the penance. Hold on one second. Are we 8275 or 8375?
Current rate is 8275.
I thought we were 8375. Okay, so this is not the correct, corrected version. The introduced rate should be-
That is the version that advertised where the increase has gone to the newspaper advertisement and the ordinance reflect the same rate.
Does the ordinance have to reflect the same advertised rate? Or can it be the? During our work session-
As this is the first reading, you can choose to direct us to change the text here or you can wait until the public hearing and change it at that point. But this is just a draft ordinance. It is not written in stone at this point.
But I think that following our work session, and correct me if I'm wrong, we agreed that the rate would be unchanged.
Yes, but the advertisers had our-
Right, right. We knew that part. So I think that the public hearing should reflect the discussion from the general fund work session. So it should be 8275.
That's what part of this first reading was said.
8275 per $100 of assessed value. Thank you, Councilmember Horace. So now with that, the rate of .8275 does not cover the increase requested by the Berlin Fire Company. So we need to consider, and we will consider that during our next work session, which is next Monday, prior to the adoption of the tax rate, how we are going to fund that. And we have asked the fire company and EMS to provide some supplemental information. They will also be on as an agenda item at the end of our utility work session. So food for thought for everyone.
Right, and I just, the only reason I said something was because you said it was their turn.
That was in that here.
Well, that was in the intended-
On the same token, Dave, I don't want to get ourselves, we did advertise because of the timing. And since it's the first reading, should this stay this way and then change it later?
Yes, it should stay this way.
I think that's the logic.
It should stay this way. But it really doesn't matter. It's up for debate.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be a public hearing on it.
But for the public hearing, it should be what the intended rate is.
Correct.
You can have that discussion prior to opening the public hearing. So when you open the public hearing, you will be opening it based on what your intent is. But until the ordinance is signed with that amount decided on, it's fluid.
So let's make sure that we're all clear. The next document for ordinance 2024-02 for the public hearing will read .8275 per $100 of assessed value.
I'm sorry, I don't agree.
With that?
I don't agree with next hearing. This ordinance drafted according to the advertisement. So we introduce an, as advertised, it's gonna go to the public hearing with the same ordinance we go to public hearing. At the public hearing, you will have a right to go up or down. And once the ordinance will be adopted, then we will change the number on the finalized ordinance. That's how we did it in the past.
That's correct. As I said, that's when, until the ordinance is signed, what you make, what you take a vote on and what you sign, that's what, that's what is important. You have to have the conversation at the public hearing.
Didn't we change this last year before, at this time?
We changed last year the rate, just like right now. We change it at the adoption of the ordinance. And then the ordinance and the rate was changed and you sign the change. But introduction and next hearing will remain 8375 as it was advertised.
So Natalie, to go along with what you were saying, if it did say .8275, the current rate,
in my advertisement-
we got to that work session, could change it if we needed to raise it.
Up or down?
Up or down, then. So why does it have to stay?
Because this is what was already-
I've followed the procedure for requirement for advertisement and stating the same rate as advertised in introduction of the ordinance. And then ordinance will remain at 8375 going to adoption. At the adoption date on April 22nd, you will decide what the rate will be. And then we will change the number and you will sign the ordinance. And that, how the rate will be set at what you decided at adoption.
I don't necessarily agree with it, but if that's the path that we need to take-
To give a little more clarification on the advertising, we have our advertising requirements per our general code.
And I'm not speaking, you do a fabulous job with the advertisements and all that. I'm just saying that-
This particular advertisement is based upon state requirements. And that plays into the timing. We have to get the advertising run within a certain timeframe. And the timing is what always-
Now, I don't know if there is anything wrong. They passed it correctly. If you just, you introduced this ordinance with 8375. For the next meeting, if you tell me to prepare this ordinance, Mary, with a different rate, is that something?
That would be fine.
Yeah, so we can change that for the hearing on the 22nd. You just need to tell us today what we would like to-
Prepare with 8275, please. And then if it's adjusted from there, the hearing and the document that will be in the packet, I'm understanding is gonna be 8375? But the available song?
No, I think from what you, what you just said, what we will have in the packet for the public hearing will say 8.8275. That's your intent, that's where you want to start the discussion.
Correct.
If it changes in the course of that meeting, what gets signed, what gets entered into the code, or you won't remember the code, but what gets signed will reflect the decision made at the public hearing.
Perfect, okay.
We also run the ad, the game in the newspaper. So it will be, it will be a different ad than not. So I'm trying to avoid the confusion between the first ad, the introduction to the second ad-
There's gonna be confusion no matter what.
To the last ordinance adoption, so.
There's gonna be confusion no matter what. I think we should advertise what our working number is. And right now, the working number following the general fund work session is 8275.
Okay, let me clear up the state. I'm gonna give a phone call tomorrow and ask them if it's okay to post a second ad in the newspaper with a different rate. If that's okay, we will run the advertisement for, before their adoption was 8275. And we will prepare an ordinance with 82.5. But if it will be advisable not to, then we will remain at this rate. And then you will decide on the rate at the hearing on 22nd.
That's understandable.
And now, an option might be to rerun the ad twice on the 11th and the 18th in newspapers. It's still-
I don't think we would be able to get it changed in time for the 11th. I'm not sure. I know the deadline is usually, I think it's-
It's usually Tuesdays.
Oh, Tuesdays. Oh, okay, my misunderstanding.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
It can be changed.
I mean, am I accurately summarizing where we were? Am I accurately summarizing where the Maryland Council were following our general fund work session? Okay, then I think that we should make every effort to have the corrected rate publicized. Thank you.
After I talk to the state.
Yes, she does need to clarify.
Yes, please. Okay, that covers our basis there.
And that was the first reading?
I know. All right, up next, Agenda Item 3, items for approval. Just for everybody's, if that's in attendance, we do offer the ability for public comment for action for each one of these items. So 3A, motion 2024-19, special event permit for the Purnell family reunion at Steve Decatur Park on Saturday, June 16th, 2024. And I believe we have the event organizers here with us this evening. So come forward and just name and your position within the organization, please.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Purnell. And I'm here on behalf of the Purnell family reunion. I am the, actually, the treasurer. And we are asking for approval for the use of the Steve Decatur Park on Saturday, June 15th.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Purnell?
No, but I think we're gonna need to change the title because Lisa said Purnell.
Purnell or Purnell?
No, it's Purnell. Purnell.
Your last name is Purnell.
My last name is Purnell. But it's Purnell.
The Purnell family reunion.
My married name is Purnell. But it's for the Purnell.
On the motion, it says Purnell.
That's easy.
Not that she's not related to Purnells, however, we don't want her-
This is for the Purnell.
And also, for clarity, it says June 16th, but it is a June 15th.
Yes, June 15th.
It's a Saturday.
They've got a ton of edits this evening.
I can hear on the countdown.
Oh, there, but on the motion, it's correct.
Yeah, the motion, that's correct.
Just a regular family reunion, a lot of laughing and talking and eating.
That is correct. It's a little bit more, you know, that complicates it, so, yes.
In the air of transparency, Lisa is my wife's cousin. Lisa is my wife's cousin. And I really would not want to make the motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for whatever this is. I was paying attention, but I mean, yeah, let's just approve it.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Horace. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that motion 2024-19 is passed unanimously. Thank you, and we'll make the changes, but it is June 15th, 2024.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Purnell. Purnell.
Thank you so much.
Now, will she be a witness at the Purnell reunion in September? Yes.
My apologies, I did not ask for public comment beforehand. If anybody wish to address the Maryland Council concerning, concerning Natalie. Okay, thank you. Up next is motion 2024-20, special event permit for the Runaway Bride Fun Run on Saturday, July 27th, 2024. And we have the event organizers here with us this evening.
Good evening, I'm Teresa Gardner.
Good evening, thank you.
So I put my application in to hold a special event in downtown Berlin called the Runaway Bride Fun Run the morning of Saturday, July 27th, which is almost 25 years to the day from the release of the movie. Thought this would be just a fun thing to do for the town to celebrate a little piece of our history and also to raise money for a good cause. In this case, it's gonna be for Worcester Gold.
Any questions for you?
How will the money be raised?
I'm sorry?
How will the money be raised?
A third-party website for people to sign up to participate and they can fundraise on their own or with a team. And it will go directly to Worcester Gold. I do not want to touch any money myself, so it would, it's, there's several sites out there. I have not decided on one yet. I'm gonna work with Worcester Gold on that. They've used one for called fundraisers in the past, but there are ones that are set up specifically for something like this.
So there would be a fee for participating in the run?
Yeah, and then they, just a participation fee. And then if people want to have a team and fundraise as well, they could. We could also possibly have some corporate sponsors, maybe get t-shirts made, you know. But I see it as a fairly simple event. If it were to be successful and do really well, maybe next year it could grow. It could be an annual thing.
Now, we've had reindeer runs and they went back in the town before following a specific route. And they always usually went the same direction. I didn't take into consideration anything other than this would be something of that nature that we kind of found before.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw the math.
Yes.
I wanted to make that clear for whoever's out there in TV land.
And it's not a long route. It's, it's, you know, it's not a 5K. It's not for athletic people. It's just for fun. People can walk, they can run. And the idea really was also that people would dress up in wedding dresses or wear white and a veil or, you know, if somebody wants to be a groom, whatever, you know. Those bridesmaid dresses that you'll wear again, whatever people want to do in the, in the sense of fun. Do you have a special connection to the movie? I'm just curious. No, just, just, you know, I just loved it. I did not live in Berlin during the filming, so I don't, I don't have any personal experience with it, but it just seemed like a fun thing. I actually saw on Facebook, I think the town was asking for photographs of the town during the filming. And that's kind of when I started thinking about, wouldn't that be fun to have something like this?
So Mary, Ivy's not here. Is there anything, is there any other events scheduled for Saturday, July 27th?
Social calendar is open.
Social, your social calendar or ours?
The social calendar is open.
They've discussed this, from what I understand, already pretty well.
You gotta hit the bread truck to lead it, right?
She was supposed to, she was supposed to just look at me and I was supposed to go like this.
Yes.
I forgot, was it a FedEx truck?
Yes, I was actually gonna try to contact FedEx and see if we could have a FedEx truck lead the procession.
You talked about it, possibly. Having this event again next year, there is a process we follow for annual events.
I did see that, yes.
And if you are considering next year, you need to have it to us by-
Approval is in September. Following outcome this evening, you should have a conversation with Ivy.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the-
Can I ask for a public comment? I'll actually get it right this time. Any public comment regarding motion 2024-19?
I'll make a motion to approve the Runaway Bride Fun Run on Saturday, July 22nd.
So a motion by Councilmember Ner, a second by Councilmember Horace. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Let the record reflect that it passed immediately.
Thank you.
So I just do have a question. That, I mean, that's a, that's a great event. No, not, no, sorry. That's a great event. I'm just curious, as the town, are we doing anything for the 25th anniversary of our-
You guys should go groupie. You should-
Ivy would be better, yeah. Ivy would be better suited to- She is actually on vacation.
Oh, okay.
I was traumatized the first time around.
What'd you say, teacher?
I was traumatized the first time around.
Why don't you just play it, why don't you in the Taylor House, you can play it on the lawn at the funeral, the night before, that way we're all-
And dressed with wedding dress.
Literally, and it's right on the street, right by the house.
All right. Motion 2024-21, 3C, approval of Maryland Department of Environment, MBE, required maintenance at the power plant or electric utilities record. Tim, what's he gonna run for?
Good evening, Maryland Council.
Before you start, isn't it Lyman, is it Lyman Appreciation Day? Maybe, I think you just said most of it. If so, happy Lyman Appreciation Day. If not, that's fine too. We appreciate you.
Every day is one.
On February 5th, we had two inspectors from Maryland Department of Environment. They were at the power plant. They were performing what's called the above-ground storage, storage system for diesel fuel. And what they did, they came in, they inspected the three 10,000 gallon tanks that are outside. And then they went into the power plant. We had to show them where the day tanks are at inside the plant. They inspected those. And then on the outside of the tank, plant on the backside, we have about six waste, waste tanks in the rear of the building. We no longer use those tanks that are in the rear of the building. So anyway, on February 14th, I received the unofficial report on the inspection and they had several things listed. So I immediately reached out to Chesapeake Environmental for their advice and wanted to get a quote from them because we had dealt with them before on different projects involving, you know, the environment and that type of thing. Chesapeake Environmental is, they are very familiar with working with MBE as far as resolving, you know, special conditions that they request and that type of thing. So anyway, in the meantime, after I met with Chesapeake Environmental, they brought in a company called Delmarva Petroleum. They kind of work in partnership together. Chesapeake Environmental can handle certain things and Delmarva Petroleum can handle the other side. So on March 8th, I received the formal, basically the permit for the power plant along with special conditions that need to be completed by a certain timeframe, which is at the end of April and also at the end of May. There's about 16 different items in there. You know, they involve minor things that they want to see changed. And then also there's larger items that they would like to see implemented. And then also the wastewater tanks that are in the rear of the building. Let me back up for a minute. We're trying to move away from diesel to start with and go to natural gas. So this is kind of in the, in the lines of trying to go away from the diesel side of it. We have six or seven waste tanks in the rear of the building that MBE would like to see us remove them, which we don't use anymore, so it makes sense to do that. So anyway, we have six tanks to remove in the rear. There's one day tank inside number four engine room that's gotta be removed. And then outside where the big three tanks are at, they want to have barriers and some other things put around there. So in the meantime, I received two quotes from both companies, which are gonna be working together on the project. Chesapeake Environmental, that was $5,656.88. And then Delmarva Petroleum was $15,859.56. And then also they charge a dollar eighty-five per gallon for any waste disposal after they drain the tanks and that type of thing. So I'm asking, asking for a motion to- Asking for a motion from the Maryland Council of the Town of Berlin awarding the power plant due to fuel supply work required by Maryland Department of Environment, an amount of $15,859.56 plus a dollar eighty-five per gallon waste oil disposal to Delmarva Petroleum Services and Chesapeake Environmental Service, But a total project estimate not to exceed $27,000.
Thank you. Can you or Natalie speak to where the $27,000 will come from?
I can speak to that. We have about $35,000 in contract services, which is $5,200 at the power plant budget. So we had the funds.
Any questions for Tim?
Tim, where are these tanks located?
Well, the three big tanks are out front of the power plant. They're three 10,000 gallon tanks. And then inside the plant, there is two day tanks. One of the day tanks is in the number one engine room. And then the other day tank is in the number four engine room. That day tank, we no longer use it. The one in number four, that engine is non-functional, doesn't work anymore. So they would like to see that tank removed, but they, they're gonna give us the go-ahead not to remove that tank now until we take out the old number four engine. Because the tank is so big, we can't get it out unless we take the engine out.
The quote says they cut out the disposal, the proper disposal of the tanks. What is the proper disposal?
What that is, there's six tanks out back, which are waste fuel tanks. And basically to get them, to take them out of there, they can't get access to it. So they have to cut them up and take them out.
But they can't, do they scrap it or what?
They scrap it, they dispose of it. It's all, all this has to be permitted through the Maryland Department of Environment. So I'll be sending misinformation to them and that way they know exactly what we're doing with these tanks. When it involves the environment, the tanks, you just, it all has to be done, the procedure, so.
Tell me, is there any liability associated with the town as the tanks aren't properly disposed of?
And there certainly should not be because these companies are very familiar with the work that needs to be done. They do this all over the eastern shore. In fact, as soon as I called them, they, they were able to tell me the inspectors' names before I even told them who they were. So they were already very familiar with it.
And it's situationally, because once they're contracted to do the work, the liability basically is theirs. Because they're, they're asserting that they will do it properly.
Yeah, they have to document, you know, what they did with the equipment, you know. That all will come back to us in a report.
Take a motion? Public comment. Oh, yeah, public comment, thank you. Anyone from the public that would like to address the Maryland Council regarding motion 2024-21? Say no? So a motion by Councilmember Horace, a second by- by Vice President Burrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that motion 2024-21 passed unanimously. Tim, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, up next is Agenda Item 3D, motion 2024-22, approval of the employee handbook. HR Director Kelsey Jensen and Town Administrator Mary Bowler are number one point. It's nice to finally see it.
Well, hello, everyone. It is Lyman Appreciation Day today. I just Googled it. So sorry, Carol Lyman, for not saying anything today.
I didn't see it until eight.
But, so this is basically everything you guys have already approved. But I did go in and make a couple other additions based on other sections that, you know, maybe we came back- you know, maybe we came back and approved something at a later date, and now I needed to change a different section to make it, uh, you know, correlate. So, I don't know if you actually want me to run through them, or I can just, um, you know, leave it to you guys to ask any questions you might have. But we are still developing, um, a couple of little subsections, which I might bring back before you. Um, for example, workers' comp. I still am not thrilled with the wording there. Um, I mean, the workers' comp policy is through, um, our workers' comp. Uh, you know, we have to abide by the, uh, rules that they have set forth, but we also want to make sure it's clear to employees in our handbook. So, that, that part, I'm still kind of looking at, um, what other municipalities do. Uh, the on-call schedule for call-ins, I want to make sure we're kind of taking another look at that. So, I'm just letting you know, this is done. I want to be able to give something to new hires that is completed, because right now I'm like, hey, ignore the table of contents, we've changed this, or this is gone, you know, and it's, it's confusing to people. So, I want something that I can give people now, but still work on a couple little things as time permits. Um, but right now, this book brings us up to compliance with, you know, everything, and, um, I'm just kind of looking for approval on, uh, the handbook as a whole. So, um, I just want to point out a couple of things. We added a table of contents that's now been updated, and it links. So, when we make a change in the handbook, it will change in the table of contents. We added an introduction, which a couple of other, um, municipalities have, so we, we kind of liked that feature, so we went ahead and added one. We had a footers, the acknowledgement form has changed. Um, anywhere in the handbook where it said manual, I changed it to handbook because that is how it is established as our handbook. Um, and then, in the appendix A, we changed the, um, licensing, like, you know, a dollar per, um, hour for getting a license to a step. So, those are kind of some of the, uh, some of the things I wanted to point out. And then I did have one other request, which isn't in here, but, um, in section six point one-three, which, um, I'm sorry, I should give you a page number according to your, uh, in here. That is page one, one-eighth of the packet. Um, right now, we have the employee birthday as a, um, it's a pilot program.
Sorry, page one nineteen.
Uh, well, it starts on one eighteen in mine. Sorry. But, um, the, um, I'm sorry, lost it. Uh, the birthday is, was well-received, and right now-
It's worked out well. It's page one thirty-six in the packet.
We may have different-
I guess we do.
Because they do, I mean, you do-
Oh, you're looking at the, at the memo. Kelsey's talking about paid holidays.
The actual paid holiday section.
The description.
Six point one-three. I happen to see one eighteen. And, and one nineteen, it carries a difference. And, yeah, um, it was well-received by employees, and I, I think it's a benefit that's, um, you know, it doesn't really cost us anything. Employee, uh, takes their birthday off, um, we give it to them as a kind of freebie holiday. Uh, if their birthday falls on a weekend, maybe the Monday or Friday, you know, and I think it's been really well-received. Um, I know when it was approved, initially, the mayor had, um, established a memo and said that it was a piloted thing, and, um, that, you know, it would be renewed annually. So, I'm up to the current merit. So, I want to see if that's something we can just add in as a holiday. Obviously, at any point, you guys could take it out if you decided you didn't want it to continue as a paid holiday, but I do think it just kind of would make it feel a little more permanent to the employees, um, and I think-
And it has worked out really well.
It has.
It hasn't had any operational issues.
Now, I created a code and ADP so that when they put it in, it still generates pay for them on that day, but it doesn't remove anything from the leave. It's more of a tracking mechanism. So, I think it's worked out really well. So, in addition to approving the handbook as is, if you guys don't have any questions, I'm asking that that holiday, um, birthday day be considered, you know, as an addition to this, um, and not a memo.
Well, I do think it's part of the compensation package for the town.
Yeah.
It is part of the compensation package for the town, so it goes from fifteen paid holidays to sixteen paid holidays.
It does.
So, I think it should be in there.
And right now, I do advert, like, when I, when we're interviewing, I do, um, say it's a benefit we have, but it's a, it's renewed annually, but I am pointing it out because people like that. When I say that, they're like, oh, that's awesome, you know? So, I think it's-
And it came from the pay point HR, um, climbing.
Yeah, it's something, um, we have done where I used to work, and I think, I was like, talking about it, and I think it was very, uh, a lot of people were like, oh, it's a kind of benefit that carries no cost- Yeah. -to the town, but it's greatly appreciated. Yeah, so.
You know, Kelsey, uh, the only page that I had questioned was, was, was workers' comp.
Okay. Do you happen to have that page number right there?
Section.
It is, it is page number one-eleven of the packet. Section six, page two.
We must have different packets. Um, sorry, let me, I'll find it.
I think it probably has to do with the council gets the full version of that.
Section six point four.
Okay. I think it's six.
It's workers' comp.
Six point oh-four.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, six point oh-four.
Yes.
Can you explain to me this statement? It's the statement in red. The employee will be required to maintain their contributions to the rural state retirement system by use of leave or by choosing to make payments for the deduction.
So, currently, how it works, if someone is out, um, for any reason, and they are not using, um, like- Workers' comp was set up really weird when I got here, and that's why we're still kind of looking at it. We did make changes to it, but, but basically, um, with their benefits as far as medical, dental, vision, um, and state retirement, those are mandated to continue with any, whether it be FMLA, whether it be, you know, uh, workers' comp, anything, right? Those have to continue. So, if we were requiring the employee to use leave at some point during that workers' comp, say that it was, um, in a period where workers' comp hasn't accepted it as a legitimate claim yet, and they're using leave, or if they didn't have leave, and so maybe it's unpaid, they still would be required to make a payment to us for that because it's a requirement that that continue. Um, so it's, I was trying to think of a way to word that.
We really, we really struggled with a few sentences in this, in this section, but it kind of boils down to if they have reached a point where they're completely out of leave, so they are therefore not getting a paycheck from the town. They still have to pay their portion of the retirement in order to maintain their placement in the retirement system.
It's seven percent?
Seven percent.
But that is something, I mean, if they change that criteria, you don't want to put seven percent.
No.
No, I'm just asking you about-
Yes, it is.
It's seven percent. But so, if someone has enough leave to cover that seven percent, they can use their leave in order to care of it. But if they didn't, um, they would have to still maintain those payments.
What, Murray, explain?
But that section is one that, um, I have a couple, I have the counties, I have Ocean Cities, I have, um, you know, I think I got Kent Counties or something, I don't know. I'm trying out, like, take a look at what other places have done and try to, um, get the best of all of them and make it, um, something we can work with. So, that section will probably come back before you, but I felt like to get the handbook approved as a whole and come back with, say, section, just section six point oh-four, that was a little easier than bringing back a whole portion here and there, so just trying to get, get any care of it.
All right. Anyone from the public that would like to address the Mayor and Council regarding motion twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two? Seeing none, we will take a motion to approve with, uh, if the, if the motion is so inclined with the addition of solidifying the birthdays in Berlin as a holiday.
You want to approve with the Berlin, with the birthdays?
With the birthdays. So, a motion by Vice President Burrell? Who is it?
Ladies first.
Okay. Uh, second by-
You can.
Sure, we're beautiful.
A second by Councilmember Green, all in favor say aye. All of those. Let the record reflect that motion twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two with the addition of birthdays passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, before we move on to that, I do have a, a thing I'd like to throw out to the group, and I'm hoping that I worded this correctly, but very good. So, if you go to page seventy-two in the packet, which is section three point oh-three, employee personnel records.
Seventy?
Page, yes, I'm just saying. So, it reads here, uh, about to start with, access is only between resource director, employee department head, and a town administrator. Department head-level personnel files may be subject to review by the mayor and/or council members as appropriate. I personally do not think that we need to be reviewing these records. However, I do think that as a council, we should get, um, uh, how many employees do we have, Kelsey, that receive performance reviews?
Well, right now, we haven't implemented any. We're trying to work for it.
Okay, so when we do, then I, I throw it out to the group. I think that the council and the mayor obviously should get just a top, just a white, you know, a top sheet of, let's say we have seventy employees, sixty-five satisfactory performance reviews, and we'll say three non-satisfactory creative action taken. And the only reason I'm saying this is because, um, we hear a lot about morale, and we hear a lot about trainings and travel and, and days off and, and coalism and whatnot. And, you know, up here, I think I can, you know, we, we, we do our best, you know, for the staff. On the other side of that frigate of coin, I think that it would help us as employers, if you will, kind of see where we're going staff-wise. A little bit of piggybacking of what VP Burrell said a week or so ago on, I don't even know where it's in my mind, but, um, how people are in the hierarchy, how they're feeling, how, how things are going in terms of their performance evaluations. I don't, I'm not saying names, I don't want anything like that, just how's the workforce doing?
You guys, we haven't implemented a specific-
Right, well, since, yes, now, I'm glad I kind of brought it up now. I think, it doesn't have to be anything involved, I'm just saying, how, how's, how's it going? You know, how, how are we doing? How's our staff? How's our workforce?
Well, and, um, as an FYI, Worcester County kind of saved me a little trouble here. I asked them if they could send over their, um, what they use for, uh, performance reviews, and they said they had different ones, uh, for different levels of staff. But they recently updated theirs, so they had like forty from different places in Maryland that they sent me, which, um, so I have quite a stack on my desk, but, um, you know, obviously, I'm probably not going to read through all of them. But I thought when we hired our admin assistant starts next week, maybe he can start looking through some of those and helping, you know, uh, pick out the better ones, um, you know, and then I can look through them as well. But, um, but yes, we are working on that if that's something you guys-
Well, I mean, I'm opening up to the group, but I also just want to clarify, because I mentioned a whole lot of stuff there. I'm not looking at this as anything to do with the pay or anything. I'm just status of workforce. I mean, is that-
I don't, I don't know how I feel about, um, I, I really don't know how I feel about us being involved in this level of day-to-day operations. Day-to-day operations is not our responsibility, and, and because we have Murray and we have a staff to, to govern day-to-day operations. And we're in the, the policymaking end of this. And for us to be involved with, 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 with with the results of, of performance evaluations, uh, I don't know if that's our place. I really don't know if that's our place. Because, because being involved at that level, we could really make it hard for, uh, for some of our, I'm going to say supervisors, uh, to maintain, uh, just to maintain coherence in their various departments. I know when I was a director, and I would prefer the board, and I had to deal with a group called, uh, Policy Council, just stay every day-to-day operations because that's my job. And the only, and you make my job a lot harder, and folks don't know who to report to and who they are accountable to. And I asked my group if it was anything dealing with staff or staffing, it came to me, and I was the one that, that worked it out off the head of the council or the board. But, but I just don't like dealing with day-to-day operations because I don't think that's our role.
And I, I mean, yes, no, I agree that, I was just, we didn't have to do anything with that information per se, it just happened. Um, but if, well, does anyone else?
I do want to point out that in the, uh, in the performance review section, which it does say we may, um, implement a formal review process, it's section three point one-eight. Um, and in my packet, I'm sorry, well, it's section three, page twenty-six, if you look at like the handbook document. But I have, yeah, that might be a little easier. But it does say in the, um, second to last paragraph that the department head and town administrator, um, would sign a date, the department head's evaluation, and it would then be forwarded to the mayor for review. So, I guess it's, it indicates in here, and this was prior to, um, we didn't really make many changes in here because we knew we were going to be implementing a, a performance review process later. But, so as of right now, it's saying that it would just go to the mayor for review, but it would be discussed with the town administrator and department head. Um, so I don't know if that affects any of your opinions, but I just wanted to point that out, that it does state in there.
And it, well, it does have something, hold on one second. It does have something in here from my previous reviews that talks about reporting structure and how the, the town strives for what Vice President Burrell just stated, that there's a clear lineage to who each employee reports to. Um, to solidify that point of, hey, you take-
Yeah.
-direction from this employee, and if there's a, a challenge, then this is your pathway.
Yep.
It is outlined in there.
And we do outline that in job descriptions as well, um, to say, you know, you would report to this person, and in their absence, you would report to this person, um.
So, I just think that, um, until it becomes, or if it became something that was a huge red flag, huge red flag, did I say that earlier? Yeah, red flag, that, um, as far as the council is concerned, that's not necessary, necessarily our area. But if it's something that becomes something that we need to be made aware of-
Murray will, Murray will make us aware.
Right, of course, that's what I'm saying. And until then, I don't, I don't-
And I think as we implement a formal review process, once we come up with something that we decide to, um, adopt, at that point, if you guys have, want to, you know, have the input on how that process works, that would probably be the most appropriate time to discuss that, in my opinion.
All right. Any other comments, discussions? If not, we'll move on to the group.
Well, no, then I think we should probably in future just take out council members in this.
I was just going to-
Yes.
Because it doesn't really need to be us.
No.
Okay.
Under three point oh-three.
Yeah.
I, I disagree with that, because department heads, albeit that you may not take part in the review process, and Mary and I have discussed this as well, this isn't anything that's new. Department heads report to Mary, who reports to the mayor's office. With that, the mayor and council have a say in who is staying in those positions and who may not stay in those positions. With that, I think that there should be a level of briefing following those, uh, reviews that is at least briefing the council on where those employee reviews stand.
It does, it does say as appropriate, but you're saying-
As appropriate.
And they do have a separate confidential file. This is not addressing that.
What's that?
They have a separate confidential file. This is not addressing that for the record too. So, they're, this is talking about their personnel files, so just want to make sure that's there too.
But-
But what you just said, um-
Jack's question was regarding the full workforce, uh, who have direct reports to said supervisors, who report to department heads, who report to the town administrator. The mayor and council have- The mayor and council have the, the mayor's office has the responsibility of appointing department heads, and they require confirmation by the council. I think that's different. Now, do we have a role in altering those, does the council have a role in altering those feedbacks? No. But should you be privy to the information at some level? Yes.
Now, now, there would be a council responsibility in what you just described if there is a change in the structure.
Correct. But I think that.
But the individuals occupying those positions, based on your recommendation, we have approval or disapproval.
Correct.
You know, so.
But I think that, in my personal belief, I think that department head level evaluations at some, whether it's a broad scope, all are satisfactory, whatever that is, should be relayed to the body, I think.
Department head, yeah. I, I, I joke.
Because they have appointing authority to those, that body, I think. It's my personal belief. My whole.
And I've shared the same thing with Mary. She doesn't.
What do you think?
Well, the whole reason, the whole, I don't want to spend all of this, but the, the only, I didn't want to micromanage or appear to micromanage or go down too deep into staff hierarchy. What I was just simply suggesting was that this group, as the mayor and council and stewards of everything town-related, just have a check-in mechanism to how staff on all levels is doing professionally.
I think in some ways, that's the role of the human resources director, too. And I think Kelsey does a good job of collecting that information and stuff. But I wanted to be clear on like the, the level of feedback that I think the council should have regarding evaluation department heads without, but you're saying, Kelsey, that this is only the personnel file.
Yes, it's the personnel file, which it says, as it states here, contains name, title, position, job description, salary changes, and employment status, training received, performance evaluations, personnel action, and disciplinary action. So the, the only thing that it wouldn't have in there would be their medical and their state retirement.
But that the council and the mayor's office need to stay in that because through the grievance process, it can be grieved to the level.
It can, yes.
So with that, that file should be capable of being received by the body in that time of, of an appeal.
And Mary did point out, it does say as, I can't, I can't find it now.
It says may be subject to review.
Yeah, as appropriate.
So I think that you've covered it. If you, if you reached a point or were dealing with a specific issue and there was a question about it, you could discuss, discuss it as a group and.
I think the way it's written is fine.
Yeah, I agree.
And I did a, I did call around on this, too, because I found it weird at first, you know. So when I spoke to a couple of other places, they said that their council or their, you know, elected body does have access if there were disciplinary types of action that they needed to be made aware of. So that's why we left it at that time.
And I, this is my opinion. I don't think that this would give any one of the five people, six people sitting up here, the right to walk into Kelsey's office and say, I want to see 70's file.
No, you have to.
No, no, I'm not. Nor would there be a reason for that.
No, I'm saying that I don't think there's a danger of that if that's inserted.
Yeah, they're not interested in that. Well, thank you all. I feel good having something. I can provide people right now and not say, ignore this, and ignore that, and we're working on this, and so this is.
I still have to all changes and stop track.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm still going to look into a couple of little things, but overall, this is a great.
Well, and what's good about this, obviously, going forward, is that since it is now table, table contents, links to sections, if a change is made in one section, we don't have to reprint the whole book. So that's.
Are we going to, are we going to provide employees a hard copy of this?
And it will be posted on the town website.
It will be on, on our network drive. I believe I can post it in ADP. I haven't really played around with that because I didn't want to post it if it wasn't ready. But, and then we could post it on our website. I know other municipalities have that. But, and then, yes, I was planning to provide at least initially everyone with a hard copy.
It's helpful to post it on the website for perspective applicants to be able to see it's there.
I just want to go back to, based on what Councilman Morris said, and trying to get a feel for the morale of the staff. I get what you're trying to do here. I think the way this is written is very inappropriate. I think a better way to accomplish what you're doing is to have individual conversations with employees, which you're not included in doing. So you can talk to any one of them, say, hey, how's it going? Do you like your job? Whatever conversation you want to have with them, to accomplish the same thing. But I think on this level, you'd be able to, I can't remember, just take it to that extreme.
All right, we've got the item four, report, town administrator's report and departmental.
The main thing that I have is just a reminder that this coming Monday, April 15, there's a utility fund budget work session starting at 5:00 PM.
We're almost through April, everyone. We're getting close. I love seeing everybody, but was that?
I'm not ready to be through April yet.
Oh, I am from the.
Ready to be through meetings.
Oh, yeah. I did ask for permission to let you all know that Caleb Hunter and his wife, Marissa, have welcomed their baby on Saturday. They had a little girl, and her name is.
Everybody's healthy?
Yes, her name is Arwin, and they said that everyone's doing well, and, yeah, they're looking forward to some naps, so.
Well, good luck with that.
He texted me to tell me. I said, go take a nap. Just wanted to let you all know that everyone's doing well, so.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor regarding the town administrators' report or departmentals?
Well, I have a question for Tim. I've ordered some more because of comment, but, man, those guys worked hard yesterday. I think, I saw, I'm in and out of this town eight, 10 times a day, it seems like, and at the same time they were there, you know. They were working hard. So that was a, you bring this on this, it's in your report, a new service.
Yep.
And I had to get on Sunday to get you to cut power into the commercial business out there.
Yeah, what we actually had to do there is, there's a driveway, entrance gravel driveway right by the Marvick Harris Transmission Line, and that pole that's on the corner, we were actually relocating it, which in turn serves down to those new homes that are being built in the field there. So we were relocating that pole to get it off the edge of that driveway. So we, we had some commercial customers that were out of power, Sunrise Church, which I had already arranged two weeks in advance for the outage on Sunday at 7:00. We waited till their service was over and they were cleaned up and out of the building. And that was the day that we showed.
Well, thanks for, yeah, right on a Sunday, you know, we appreciate it.
It worked out great.
And Tim's budget has another potential move over in that direction as well with a similar outage, so.
Yes, we did.
For FY '25. So this was the pilot test.
Yeah, this was moving in one direction, and then in the new budget, it's going a whole different. Basically removing the overhead line that's going across the road and going underground.
Any other questions regarding the town administrators' reporters' departmentals? All right. Up next are comments from the public. Anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the council, and we'll start with Vice President Burrell.
That's all I have is, when you turn onto Harrison from, there's a hole in the street.
Like in front of the library?
Yes, when you come into town, you are turning off Main Street onto Harrison.
Is it immediately right there?
Yes.
Because they were doing, it's where they had the water there issue.
Yeah. There's a hole.
I almost thought it was a dear lass.
So I'm there, dear lass.
Thank you. Councilmember Herr?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Nope, nothing.
Oh, man. Councilmember Ors?
Yeah, just one thing. I just want to thank Mary, Jamie, and Josh. I had a resident question about the status of the Broad Street Live Station, and I emailed that out, and the email reply looks like pretty much on, on, on track, just waiting on some more vendor questions and then we'll move forward. So that's, so thanks. That's all.
Anything else? So, Councilmember Green? I'm going to follow suit with comments from the mayor. I don't have anything other than happy lineman appreciation day.
Absolutely.
Even though we started a little late, we always appreciate you. And then thank you, Natalie, to your team, and all of our department heads for the work on the budget. So, all right, comments from the press? Seeing none?
As you married.
Move to the room.
Into.
Move to the room into executive session.
There we go. And I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those. And yep, I'm getting used to the end.
There we go, yeah.
The end of the meeting, executive session. I don't know yet. We're going to read that. Kate, Kate, I got to read this part, and then we'll sort it out. I know, it gets confusing, confusing for me too, so. All right, so a statement, time and place of the closed session, the time of the closed session is today's date, April 8th, 2024, following the regular session. The place that we're going to hold the votes here in the council chamber, stream live on Facebook. Following that vote to go into closed session, we will move over to the conference room. Purpose of the closed session is discussion regarding a personnel matter. Dating time that we'll return back to the public meeting is April 22nd, 2024, 7:00 PM. Statutory authority to close the session, this meeting, pardon me, was closed under the following provisions, Article 3-305, Item, Section B, Item 1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. With that, we'll ask if anybody objects to the mayor and council going into closed session. Seeing none, we'll take a vote to go into closed session.
Motion to move into closed session.
So a motion by Councilmember Ors.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Nurr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those. Let the record reflect that the motion to go into closed session, passage to unanimous. Thank you, Kate.
I know, but the.